Welcome, it's now 7:02 and I will call to order the October 15th, 2013 meeting of the Duncanville City Council. Our invocation tonight will be led by Pastor Ginger Hertenstein from Duncanville's First Presbyterian Church. That will be followed by our Pledge of Allegiance led by the interim City Secretary Angie Wade. Please stand.
Mayor Hodge, council members, will you bow with me in prayer? God, you rule over nations. You preside in councils. You aid those who call upon you and establish the work of our hands. Thus we seek you in prayer. And in seeking, we ask, who will bring us prosperity? Let your light shine on us and on our city. Fill every heart with joy. Let food, drink, and shelter abound. May all enjoy a sense of belonging. Give us your vision for such a reality and your wisdom to see and do our part. God, we desire for this city to flourish, so empower these men and women, these leaders of our city, to develop a sense of community, to tear down barriers, to open new doors, to see Duncanville in a new light, for they serve willingly, they care sincerely, they eagerly labor for its well-being. And so we long for success, but often fail trying. Yet you, God, turn failure to fruitfulness, and so we call on you. We ask that you will give us success, that you will strengthen these council members and the mayor with your vision, that you will give them your loving presence and undying courage. Let us lay aside the hindrances of selfishness and the disease of negativity. And as they lead us, help this council to not only be empowered, but to empower all the citizens of Duncanville, that each one may contribute. We pray confidently for these people, for this is their call. We trust that this is your will and you will help us accomplish it. As a minister of the Gospel of Jesus Christ, I pray these things. Amen.
Amen.
I have several real quick items to mention tonight for my mayor's report. The first one is council member Jeanette Jameson is not here tonight and she's home ill and she wanted to know that, let her, members of her district know that she would have been here if she could, but she is quite ill tonight. The second thing is, we have some guests here tonight. They are the Boy Scouts Pack 493, Weebleows, two, and they are in fifth grade Cub Scout class. And this is the last rank of the Cubs before they transition to Boy Scouts. So they are doing this as part of a badge and some work that they need to do to observe our meeting tonight, so we welcome you and hope you enjoy the meeting. And the last thing I'd like to mention is, I know it's been raining, but I hope all of you will take time to enjoy all the fall decorations that are in the parks and we have some in the lobbies, and they've been done especially nice this year. And we appreciate the way it makes our property and our city hall look and the festival that it gives the atmosphere here. And so if you appreciate them like I do, make sure you let the staff know, a lot of work and thought and planning has to go into making the facilities here look this nice. So the next thing tonight is our proclamations. And we have Pastor Ginger doing double duty tonight, she's also receiving a proclamation, so we'll have her come up and also she'll be joined by Anita Wright from the Duncanville Outreach Ministry. I introduced her as Anita Wright and it's Anita Davis, and I know better than that. Whereas, the Duncanville Outreach Ministry celebrated 25 years of service to the city of Duncanville and its citizens, and whereas, in 2013 Duncanville Outreach Ministries has provided assistance totaling $277,185.95 by providing food and clothing, gasoline to families dealing with cancer treatments and other major medical issues, school supplies, miscellaneous assistance such as water heater replacements, assisting families with electric bills, assisting with prescription medications, rent assistance, and assistance with water bills. And whereas, through the belief that a great place to live depends upon a can-do spirit, the First Presbyterian Church of Duncanville is hosting the Festival of Hope at Armstrong Park on October 26, 2013, from 3:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m., consisting of booths, concerts, and storytelling, to serve as a fundraising event to help support the Duncanville Outreach Ministries. And whereas, citizens are asked to bring non-perishable food items to help stock the shelves of the outreach ministries. Also monetary donations will be accepted towards the goal of raising $50,000 to expand their services to assist senior citizens living on minimal social security. Now, therefore, I, Deborah Hodge, Mayor of the City of Duncanville, Texas, do hereby proclaim the 26th day of October as Duncanville Outreach Ministries Day, and ask the citizens of Duncanville to join me in supporting the Festival of Hope and in thanking the First Presbyterian Church and the Duncanville Outreach Ministries for their dedication and support to the citizens of Duncanville. Thank you very much. And I have a copy for each one of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Both of you may want to say a few words. You can step up to this.
I noticed that you mentioned the water heater that we repaired, and I just want to give you thanks to the guys in the water department. They happened to notice that one of our seniors had an excessively high water bill, so they went over to check on her house and found that her water heater had busted, and not only that, water was running everywhere. So the first place they came was to Duncanville Outreach and said, can you please help her? She needs water because she's on oxygen. So I also want to give thanks to the city and the work that the employees do, that when they see a citizen in need, they come to us and say, hey, can you do something to help us out? As of the end of today, we had done $285,000 in assistance to this community. Right now, we're feeding between 400 and 500 families a month, and we're trying to do the best we can. I'm sure a lot of you've seen on TV that the food bank currently doesn't have a lot of food. With the government shutdown, they're not able to get any USDA products. So right now, it's kind of tough at all food pantries, whether it's us or any of the others and surrounding communities and cities. We're all struggling and we can all use whatever help is available. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You might want to know that they are spending money so fast that we haven't been able to keep the amount on the proclamation current. So we've redone it, but apparently we're behind already.
It goes out the door fast.
Yes, it does.
And we, as a church, just wanted to know how we could give to the community. So when we decided to do this concert, that's what we looked at. We've given money and given food, but what can we do to actually participate in the community? And that's what we're asking all of you to do as well, is to come out and be together in a feel-good atmosphere of stories and music, which is something we, as a church, love to do, and then support something that's really good. When Anita was interviewed by Channel 8, what, a week ago or so, they cut out the best part before putting it on the news, and that was, she said, we draw together as a community, and the community helps me, and we will be okay, because we, hand in hand, together as neighbors, help one another. So I want to thank the city and the council members for taking a lead in this. I appreciate that so much, that you all have partnered with us and have worked with us in this, because in raising $50,000, if we each gave a dollar, we would already have $40,000 right there. And it's so easy when we work together, and yet often such a challenge. And so we want to stand up to the challenge, and thank you for standing with us.
And thank you, Ginger, for all the hard work that your church is doing. We really appreciate it, and the money goes back into the community. So we just appreciate any of the help we're getting and the canned goods that are coming in. As fast as they're coming in, they're going out the door. Today alone, we helped 47 families. So as soon, quick as it's coming in, we're giving it right back out to families. Thank you so much.
Okay, and you might want to introduce your husband. I know he's a big part of what you did done.
My husband, Tony, is here tonight too, if you want to stand up. And he gets the nice challenge of doing all the food pickups for any organization that donates to us. He picks up from Pizza Hut, Chipotle, the donut shop over on Cedar Ridge, Costco, so all the different restaurants and organizations that give to us. He gets to drive daily and go pick all that up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anita, before you run off, that figure that you gave, that's what you've given so far this year, correct? That's not, okay.
Yes, that's just this year, $285,000 as a close-up business today.
Okay, very good.
Next, we have our citizens' public comment period. The citizens' public comment period is a time for the public to address the city council on any subject. However, the Texas Open Meetings Act prohibits us from discussing any subject raised during the citizens' public comment period that is not on the agenda, except that the council or staff may get specific factual information in response to the inquiry, or propose that the subject be placed on an agenda for discussion at a future meeting. Any citizen wishing to speak must file a request card with the city secretary prior to the start of the council meeting. When called forward, please state your name and address for the record and limit your comment to two minutes. First and only speaker tonight is Jeanne Matern. Yes, please do, and your address.
Again, it's Jeanne Matern, and I live here in Duncanville. I'm at Alarc. And I have two concerns that I would like to put before you, which you may not be able to answer or address tonight, but I heard some very sad news today, that Toshio's might be leaving Duncanville. Toshio's has been in Duncanville for, I mean, the Duncanville area for sure for 30 years. And I went up and I spoke to her tonight, and I asked her why she was leaving Duncanville, and she said, the rent's just so high and the taxes, and she said, it's been really slow and I just can't afford it. I'm thinking, the only two nice restaurants we have here in Duncanville are really Toshio's and Roma's, not to say that the McDonald's and all the others aren't nice to have, but, you know, a nice restaurant to go to. I would really, she said that Duncanville City owns 30% of the building and that this Juan, Anderson owns 70%. And so I would plead to y'all to work with him and to get their rent lowered, to get the taxes lowered, and not lose Toshio's. It is, I can't even get my friends from North Dallas to come here unless they go to Toshio's. That's the only restaurant they will come, I mean, why they'll even come see me on this side of town, and that's sad. So if we lose it, we're going to be losing something very special. The other thing is, talking about Duncanville, and I understand there's many things that y'all need to worry about, and this is not maybe high priority, but please keep in the back of your mind, I don't hear anything about this, is that once this lawsuit gets settled, you know, with the lawyer and the developer, we need to get Main Street developed. When you come off 20, I mean, vision, perception is everything. When you go in a restaurant, you go in a home, or the outside of a home, perception is everything. And if you drive down Duncanville on Main Street, you don't look at anything nice until you get to Ben Franklin. We need to get this settled, we need to get the development, we need to get more bond money, we need to get Main Street developed, so people will have a nice appeal and want to come, and maybe more younger people live in Duncanville. The majority of people that live in Duncanville are my age, you know, which that's okay, but we need young people. We're all going to die off one day, and we need some good, good, young people coming in. So anyway, that's it. Thank you for listening to me.
Next, we have our consent items. 1C, approval of the minutes for the city council meeting held on August 29, 2013, September 17, 2013, as amended, September 9, 2013, and September 24, 2013. 2C is pulled from the consent agenda. 3C is pulled from the consent agenda. 4C, approval of an expenditure in the amount of $89,000 for annual purchase of ready-mixed concrete from Ready Mix Inc. through the City of Lancaster Ready Mixed Concrete Cooperative. 5C, approval of an expenditure in the amount of $284,827 for the purchase of a truck-mounted combination sewer cleaner from Southwest International Trucks, Inc. through the local government purchasing cooperative by board. 6C, approval of an expenditure in the amount of $54,509.63 for the purchase of rugged mobile computer devices from Austin Ribbon and Computer Supplies, Inc. through the State of Texas Cooperative Purchasing Program. 7C, approval of an expenditure in the amount of $73,225 from the utility fund with Delitech Engineering for professional engineering services for the Clark Road 1.5 MG elevated storage tank. 8C, approval of an expenditure in the amount of $86,550 from the utility fund with Creado and Associates, Inc. for professional engineering design services for water and wastewater improvements. 9C, approval of an expenditure in the amount of $128,818.45 for purchase of police patrol vehicles from Reliable Chevrolet, Inc. through the State of Texas Cooperative Purchasing Program. Councilman Boyd.
Did I hear, did you move, 1C was the minutes?
I removed the one date.
Yeah, so it's just the 17th, the 19th, and the 24th.
There's the 29th.
I wasn't, I didn't have my hearing aid on at the time, so.
I took out one, and one was as amended.
And did you, can you move the, the one item that we have to before we can approve any of these?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just trying to help you remember. I'm sorry. I just, I lost track once you got to going, so excuse my interruption.
Not a problem. Councilman Harvey.
Okay, I'll second Pastor Jones's motion.
All right, I have a motion in a second. Would you please vote? Motion carries 5-0. Agenda item 2C, approval of resolution number 2013-010101502 and an interlocal agreement authorizing participation in the Brazos Valley Council of Governments Purchasing Solutions Alliance Cooperative. And we're going to have our attorney read an amended part of the contract, and then whoever wants to make a motion on it, please refer to that reading as amended.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And resolution 2013 is dash 101502, as discussed in our work session, will be an interlocal cooperative purchasing agreement by and between the City of Duncanville, Texas, with the Brazos Valley Council of Governments for Purchasing Solution Alliance, which will be attached and incorporated in the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you.
So move as read.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Would you please vote? Motion carries 5-0. Agenda item 3C, approval of a five-year lease purchase agreement and an expenditure in the amount of $32,160.6432 annually with Document, Documentation, Inc. through the Purchasing Solutions Alliance Cooperative Purchasing Program for an enterprise-wide electronic document management system.
So move?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Would you please vote? Motion carries 5-0. Agenda item 10, public hearing to consider the request of LaShanda Marshall Willens, representing Marshall Arts Entertainment Group, to amend the existing downtown Duncanville DD zoning to include a specific use permit for an indoor party and rental facility on AMG Merrill, abstract 884, page 075, tract 40, more commonly known as 106 East Freeman Street. So the public hearing is now open. If you wish to speak, please come forward.
Move, close public hearing.
Seeing none, I'll accept that motion.
Second.
And I have a second. Would you please vote? Motion carries 5-0. Agenda item 11, consider directing staff on the request of LaShanda Marshall Willens, representing Marshall Arts Entertainment Group, to amend the existing downtown Duncanville DD zoning to include a specific use permit indoor party and rental facility on AMG Merrill, abstract 884, page 075, tract 40, more commonly known as 106 East Freeman Street. Councilman Harvey.
May I move for approval?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion?
Mayor, if I might, just for the record, if the council were to vote to approve this, would this also include the conditions as reflected in the recommendation of P and Z, so when we bring the ordinance forward, those conditions are incorporated?
I am assume, assume so, but whoever made the motion needs to clarify that.
I move for approval with the conditions as recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
All right, does a second concur with that?
Yes.
All right. Seeing no other discussion, would you please vote? Motion carries 5-0. Agenda item 11, 12. Discuss and direct staff to prepare an executable contract for approval at the first meeting in November for the Red Flex Scoff Law Program. In addition, provide the required interlocal agreement with the Texas Department of Motor Vehicles and the interlocal agreement with Dallas County.
Ms. Mayor. I had asked that this be put on the agenda, is the, the city has had for a number of years, the, the red light cameras within our community, and the fines that are associated with them are not always respected as much as they would be an ordinary ticket. And there are approximately 80,000 outstanding tickets that go back for quite a few years. And there has been a proposal by the company that operates the red light company, Kent, to do a collection, has built a collection program, and offered and proposed a, a contract for us. And I've reviewed that contract, along with visits with the, with Dallas County, who are key players in, in the program. The program basically is the Scoff Law, for those who are not familiar with it. The Scoff Law is, is basically legislature passed it for scoffers. A scoffer being one who does not pay his bills, does not take care of his obligations, so properly known as the Scoff Law. And basically, there is a $75 fine for disobeying the, the red light operation, and the state allows you to collect $25 on top of that for collection efforts. And the contract that we'll be negotiating, that staff will, is basically, ends up costing us about $10.24 out of that 25, so we end up with 75 plus another $15. So it's not any additional cost for us. It's, it's somewhat of a complicated process in that there's a lot of communication. The way the program runs is that the person who violates the red light camera is given an administrative hearing opportunity, and through that, if it's still withheld, it's literally a ticket like any other speeding ticket signed by a police officer. This is all done through video cameras, and it's all documented. And under the, under the law, and once these become 91 days old, and this law goes into effect, and we have the ability to contract with the county and with the Department of Motor Vehicle at the state level for all out-of-Dallas County violations, the people who reside outside of Dallas County. They, they are then flagged, and it's called a flag, on their registration of your vehicle, and if you go to register your vehicle, you will be prohibited from registering your vehicle until you pay that fine. And so you have to come to the city and pay the fine. The city then has to record that. That has to be communicated to the county, and then it gets released. So there's a lot of documentation. The counties and the state require digital files, so that's why using a service for this $5 fee is a very cost-effective way of moving the transactions and the history of the transactions. And they also will not charge us any fees until we've collected and have on deposit over twice what we will owe in fees. So they, they've really made it something that is very hard for us not to, to take effective. We also have some of our cameras that are, are not as effective for as transactions go as in the past. However, the cameras were put there for safety, not for monetary reasons. However, in managing any asset, if we have other locations that'd be more dangerous, then they've agreed to evaluate those with coordination with our police departments, street department, and if they find that they're more effective somewhere else, they'll move two of those at no cost to the city. So they've been a very cooperative, or being a very cooperative vendor. And also, the, so the fees that they'll charge us will be the same for the existing outstanding and the new tickets going forward. And in the receivable world, every day that goes past, one more day, its collectability is diminished greatly. And so the sooner we get this started, the better off we are, and then on an ongoing basis, we don't ever expect this number to build up like this with this program. So we're fortunate in that our city attorney represents two other cities for sure that have already negotiated this contract, so it's almost going to be like a very free review, I mean, cheap review, a very low-cost review of the contract. So, so anyway, we're, I, I'm excited, because this, this could generate anywhere from $2 to $3 million of found money for us and the community. And y'all know the budget cycle we went through, there are a lot of unanswered requests that we have, and the law is pretty specific about how we use this money, so we must, can't violate, but we have a lot of street projects that deal with street safety and so forth, the way the law allows. And so we'll administer those collections by law and expend them, but we still will be benefiting our citizenry. I also will tell you that less than 10% of the violators in those 80,000 tickets belong to 7511675137, less than 10%. So I thank you as a community for adhering to and respecting them. It's people coming in through our town, out of our town, whatever, and that's who the violators are. So we're really not going to be taxing our citizens, we're really not. And so I apologize the long explanation, but I, I think it's worthy of y'all knowing as a community why we're doing what we're doing and what benefits we're going to get from it. And I will pass all of my research and all to staff to do their job, and that's to negotiate the contract with the attorney and bring it back to us on the first meeting in November, so we don't lose any more time of getting the process started. And we'll have to have inter-city, an inter-city agreement with Dallas County and the Department of Motor Vehicle and this contract. So there's really three contracts that we have to negotiate, so. Two of them aren't negotiable, because one's a state and one's a county. They're pretty set in their way. But ours with the vendor is, so, you know, I don't know if we just need to vote on direction or what you do, I don't know.
I think I will entertain a motion from you at this time.
Okay, I saw move, that everything I said be done. Like when I say to be done.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Attorney, is that motion acceptable?
Yes, I would understand the motion would be to direct staff to bring back an amendment to the Red Flex contract, two, to bring back an interlocal agreement with the Texas Department of Motor Vehicles and with Dallas County, a third contract with Dallas County, an interlocal agreement to implement Scoff Law. agreement to implement Scoff Law.
Thank you. I have a motion in a second. Would you please vote? Motion carries five zero. Agenda item thirteen, discuss and direct staff to prepare a letter authorizing Med three thousand to gather and submit the required data to qualify the city of Duncanville for eligibility to receive state funding for Medicaid and uninsured patients.
Ms. Mayor.
Councilman Boyd.
I can also explain this with a lot less words. This, this program is another found revenue source for us, and I, I really appreciate Chief Rhodey and his aggressiveness and his paying attention to business. Our ambulance operation in, in, in the city is certainly more costly than our reimbursement. And, and so, it's a service that, that is probably one of our most pride-driven activities, and we, we don't want it to be anything other than first class. But in reimbursement, we, we have opportunity due to a Medicaid waiver program that was passed through the state government, from the federal government, there's fifteen billion dollars over the next five years that are available for additional collections for uninsured and Medicaid-eligible people that we're taking care of. And, and we transport right at forty-something percent of our transports are Medicaid or uninsured. So this program is going to allow us, and what it really requires us to do is become approved by Medicaid as a provider. And that's something that I'm real familiar with, being in the hospital world for a while. The, the critical part there is that we submit all of our information. We're then approved as a Medicaid provider. And with doing that, we can generate the first year approximately three hundred and fifty thousand dollars more than we did this year. The next year will probably go down because there's only so much in the pool, and next year, more people will jump on the bandwagon, and there's less money to spread around. And that's, that's the way the waiver is designed and works. But if nobody else gets on the bandwagon, and our, and our transports stay the same, it'll be three hundred and fifty, the, the least it probably would drop to is about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, our portion. And so, the one thing that I was real concerned in, is that I asked Chief Rhodey was the characters that were going to do this, Med three thousand. The Med three thousand people have on staff a gentleman who has many years in cost reporting. And in Medicaid, the place where you get in trouble is when you have errors in your cost reports, and you subject yourself to audit. And they come out and they say, three years ago, you did this, this, and this, give us some money back. So the key is having a, a professional company, not our finest department, totally done. So for the same fee that they will do in this process, we have an existing contract with them, so we don't have to have a new contract. They're just to amend this contract. And I also said that since we're amending this contract, they typically have a setup fee of thirty-five, thirty-four hundred dollars. I said, no, we don't. We're just amending this one. And they said, okay. So they're, they're okay with it, and, and to me, it's, it's the best group. When I was at Texas Municipal League this week, I visited with all the other companies, and I did not get any warmth out of any of them that they knew anything about this waiver, or that they were really preparing to use it, which was kind of surprising. So I think y'all have, the previous council has made a good choice in Med three thousand for our ambulance billing. And so that's basically is, is I think the council would direct staff to release city information to Med three thousand, because they will do that, no cost to us either, for submitting our application to Medicaid. So I'd make that in the form of a motion of direction to staff.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no lights, would you, okay.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to make one quick comment. Excuse my voice. If I remember correctly, Cliff, it was going to be the year two thousand and fifteen before we get our first dollars.
The way Medicaid, Medicaid pays in arrears in the year. So the sooner we get started, we'll only get a portion of two thousand and fourteen. It takes about thirty to forty-five days to get it done, but we'll get a portion of it, of fourteen activity, but we won't get it till fifteen. As the mayor understands that delay, I know.
I just wanted, wanted to, so that we're not expecting.
Yeah, we won't get any money in the fourteen. It'll be in the fifteen budget that, that we'll have for that.
Could you please vote? Motion carries five oh. Agenda item fourteen, discuss and consider approval of the written performance agreement between the Duncanville Community and Economic Development Corporation and Marshall Arts Entertainment Group for an economic development incentive to assist with expansion expenses, specifically a fire alarm system for their business. Councilman Harvey.
May I make a motion that we approve the written performance agreement between the Duncanville Community and Economic Development Corporation and Marshall Arts Entertainment Group for an, an economic development incentive to assist with expansion expenses, specifically a fire alarm system for their business?
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Having no lights, would you please vote? Motion carries five oh. Agenda item fifteen, discuss and consider approval of ordinance number twenty-two oh nine, approving a negotiated resolution between the Atmos City Steering Committee and Atmos Energy Corp. Mid-Tex Division regarding the company's two thousand and thirteen annual rate review mechanism. Would entertain a motion on this. All right, if you want to.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Corey Green. I'm the Public Affairs Representative for Atmos Energy for the city of Duncanville. And so I'm here on behalf of the company to answer any questions that may come up in regards to this ordinance. But also, I wanted to take the opportunity to introduce myself. I'm new to the role, and so I have a couple of business cards, if you all don't mind. I'd love to leave them, and you can pass those down.
I did have one question. Why is the Dallas area not a part of the weather normalization adjustment?
That, that is a very good question, and I actually don't have that answer. I was very curious to know why Dallas would elect not to be a part of that program as well, but.
Seems to have hurt us.
And, and now, my understanding of it is just the city of Dallas proper, and not the county of Dallas. So residents within the city of Duncanville should be able to, still to partake.
Okay, and the unincorporated areas, it says. Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Green? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilman Harvey.
Madam Mayor, I move that we consider approval of ordinance twenty-two oh nine, approving a negotiated settlement between the Atmos City Steering Committee and Atmos Energy Company regarding the company's two thousand and thirteen annual rate review mechanism.
I have a motion in a, is there a second? And I have a second. Just a quick question for our attorney. You have reviewed this, I assume, and it is in order?
Yes, Madam Mayor, this is an ordinance that's similar to the other ordinances of the other participating cities, and I have reviewed it, and it meets the requirements of the law. I've also talked to our representative at Lloyd Gosling, and they would recommend approval of this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other lights, would you please vote? Motion carries five oh. Agenda item sixteen, receive council member reports. Councilman Jones.
I would just like to, to recognize four Mountain View students from Professor Vasquez class, government class, who are present here. So when they record this on their phones, they will be able to say, yes, they were here. So it's good to, to see them out and participating within the process. I didn't get their names, so they're going to have to be able to say it was, was them before the, four other students come and take credit. We also want to announce the fact that Mountain View's fall production begins tomorrow at seven thirty, and there'll be performances at two thirty and seven thirty on Friday as well, and then the last performance will be on Saturday at two thirty as, as well. Please come out and support our community college.
And I'll take this opportunity to congratulate you and the Boy Scouts, Cub Scouts, too, for picking one of the shortest, best meetings we have ever had to attend. You have been very fortunate tonight. Councilman Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to also thank the young men from PAC four ninety-three. I have the pleasure of working with Troop four ninety-three, and I see some of these young men regularly, and I'm glad to see them here. I'm proud of them for their efforts moving forward. I, I want to say something to Corey Green. We appreciate you being here, and this, this weekend is the Duncanville Chambers Civic Auction, Annual Civic Auction, and you picked a great time to show up. If you really want to get involved in public affairs in Duncanville, you could do that this Saturday night. It'll be here in town at the Hilton Garden Inn. And I would encourage all of our citizens and our city staff to be involved if you can. I think it's going to be a great event. Gail Slager, who's put on many events through the years for a lot of folks in, in Dallas, some very big corporations and big folks. She is one of the folks that's heading up this, and we have four folks that are really working on it very hard. And I think it's going to be a tremendous, tremendous event, and I would encourage all of you to be there. The second thing I want to say is, there is a young lady who's opened a hamburger business in Wheatland Plaza, four thirty-eight Wheatland Plaza, JP's Burger Box. I've eaten there numerous times. It's a place where you go in, get your burger, and leave, and it's very good. And I would encourage all of the folks at Duncanville to, to drop by there and get you a hamburger to go. It's, it's a, it's a good burger, and you will enjoy it. I can assure you, their fries and their onion rings are good, too, and you can tell that I like burgers, just from looking at me. The last thing I want to do, this is not really in my district, but this, Disquinto Seventy-five Percent Inc., it is a business that's located at nine fifteen Gemini Avenue in Duncanville. They have tremendous discounts on, on all kinds of things, coffee makers, clothes, all kinds of furniture, and it's, it's a really, really neat business. If you've never been there, and if you go, you need to make sure you cross the parking lot and back, go to the other buildings so that you see everything that they've got. But with Christmas coming up, this is something people need to consider. You know, the gifts you don't buy at the auction this weekend, you can, you can certainly pick something up there. But I wanted to mention that business because it's a tremendous business, and glad it's in our community.
Councilman Boyd.
I'll, I'll certainly second what Dan said about, I'll certainly second what Stan said about Disquinto Seventy-five. I think I'm one of their best customers. But they're going to have Christmas trees again this year, too. So it's a, they're artificial trees. It's a great.
They're already there.
They're already there. I haven't been by it lately. But the other thing about it, he is a young man that started, he's from, um, pitiful. He's not from Mexico, he is from Colombia, from Colombia. And he started, and his first job he ever had around here was flipping hamburgers at the original McDonald's over on Oreo. He's been here that long. He married a Duncanville graduate from high school. They are a fabulous fam, they are the entrepreneurial people that we want to attract into town. We want our self-grown people. You know, our, our greatest economy that we have is the twelve square miles we have, the forty rough thousand people we have, the spending capacity just in that twelve square miles. And we want our people to benefit, for we want entrepreneurs to spurn from that group and reap the harvest. So, thanks, Stan, for doing that, because they are in my district, and I appreciate that. The other thing that I, I wanted to say is that, again, for, hopefully, we're kind of through the spraying time. Hopefully, we've skated through another year without any more mosquito problems, and, and we've, we've noticed a lot of cleanup on the part of our citizens. And for any of y'all that have taken dead wood out and old trees and checking the tires laying around in your backyard that used to hold up volleyball nets and stuff, thank you, because that's what makes it go away, not the spraying. It's, that's too late, we have to spray. So I, I just want to thank everybody, because District One was hit real hard this year. And I want to thank you for your cooperation and, and your effort. And I'll remind you one other thing. We, we have boards and commissions that we're going to be interviewing very quickly. And if you've yet to sign up, and if you still have interest in being part of this community and boards and commissions, please see the city secretary during the city hall days and hours that they're open, and get an application and get scheduled for an interview. We really want people involved. Thank you.
Agenda item seventeen, recess into executive session in compliance with Texas Government Code Section five five one dot oh seven one, consultation with attorney to receive legal advice and/or discussion pending litigation regarding, A, Couples versus City of Duncanville. So we are now recessed at seven fifty-one. Take any action necessary as a result of the executive session. There is no action necessary tonight. Our meeting is adjourned. Eight o'clock.